I called order the city of Columbia and city council meeting of July eighteenth, twenty twenty three. I'll ask for Dan to give us the invocation and then we'll all join together with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord bless those who would office in the government or city, help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, by the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, he called roll.
Here.
Listen.
Here.
Patilio.
Here.
Banner.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Willard.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Received a copy of the minutes of our meeting minutes of June twentieth, twenty twenty three. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? They'll stand accepted as submitted. I want to announce at this time that at seven fifteen P M. We will hold a public hearing on the twenty twenty four tax budget. A reading of communications received a request from Ashley Garber of the Little Clippers to hold a tag day on July twenty third, twenty twenty three in the city at several business location. And we'll deal with that matter later. I would also like to take this opportunity to read the Historical Society of Columbia and Fairfield Township proclamation. It was actually presented last night at their seventieth anniversary. Whereas the Historical Society of Columbia and Fairfield Township is celebrating their seventieth anniversary of its founding this year, having held their first meeting August twenty fourth, nineteen fifty-three with thirty-four people attending. And whereas their goal is to encourage and preserve the history of Columbia and Fairfield Township for future generations by discovering, collecting, and exhibiting artifacts and antiquities of interest to our community. And whereas the Historical Society operates, supports, and maintains the Log House Museum and Annex and encourages all businesses and community members to take advantage of the historical information, which includes our rich heritage of people, places, and events, all through access to genealogy, genealogical, biographical, and other records entrusted to the care of the society. And whereas the presence of the society in our elementary schools has been a great accomplishment to teach to the young, the storied past of the city and township to help them be better servants of our community in the future. Now, therefore, we, the council of the city of Columbia, do hereby proclaim our appreciation to the Historical Society of Columbia and Fairfield Township and do further express our sincere gratitude to the Historical Society and its members for their greatly appreciated dedication to the preservation of the history of the city of Columbia and Fairfield Township for the benefit of our citizens and visitors of the city and township dated the seventeenth day of July, twenty twenty three. You've all received a copy of this proclamation, which was well accepted by the people last night. Okay, are there any questions on either of those communications? Comments? Okay. On reports of commissions and board. Received a copy of the Park Recreation Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of June twenty six, twenty twenty three. You received a copy of the Park Recreation Cemetery Board Special Meeting Minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty three. And you received a copy of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty three. Are there any questions or comments on any of those documents? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. At this point, I would I I want to announce this. You do not have anybody wishing to be recognized and appear before us at this time. To let me know when it's up. Okay, we're going to move to the manager's report and I'll turn that over to Lance.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, our staff continues to be trained on the software update that we've been implementing this year. We've got one payroll under under our belt and soon to be one tomorrow. And then we're going to be moving over to the utilities aspect of it, so. Should be, I mean, it's going, it's going well so far, so. Since the last meeting, we opened the bids for the recoding of the one million gallon water tank. How's and Bear did review the bids and they put put it on the agenda for tonight. That being said, with with the end of the year coming, we don't want to miss this this time to paint that. And we're thinking that couple of weeks could make a difference, so I wanted to talk about possibly having a special meeting at the beginning of August. Just for the second reading of this legislation, so we can talk about that. Do it right now if you want. Everybody gonna be in town or available. The first week of August, it could actually be, it could even be the Monday. Just has to be ten days from today or more.
I would probably recommend August first. I'll be definitely out of town through that Sunday, maybe into the Monday, but I'll be back by Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm out of town that first week.
Okay. Anybody else know their schedule? Dan? Okay. So what you want to do the same time as the regular council meeting? That do you want to do seven o'clock? Do you want? That makes sense.
Are you saying August first, August first?
August first, yeah.
But.
He's not gone, but I I believe Dick will be back. And Dan will be back, so we can we could tentatively do that and I'll make sure closer to the date that we'll have that we'll have a quorum. We want to pencil that in. Okay.
Could we, could we move it up a little bit?
Yeah, like early, a little earlier.
Well, it's gonna depend on Dan. So we'll just keep it at seven o'clock if you don't mind.
Whatever's good for Dan, that's fine. We're gonna be here at five, so.
Yeah, so we'll we'll just keep keep you up to date as we reach out to Mr. McBane and Mr. Bradford.
Do we have to vote to hold a special meeting? That's what I thought. I just want to make sure everybody was okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that. See, we're still the auditor, the auditors are here, we're finishing up the twenty twenty-two audits. Since the last meeting, we actually finished up paving and cleaning up everything. Appreciate everybody for pitching in. All the departments helped out. We got a lot paid, so it's it's very nice. See. We are working on a with a local company who's expanding. We're gonna try to get some funds to possibly improve their access road, so I'll keep you up to date on that. We've been, we did talk about the solar panel legislation in the spring, but we did not finalize that. So I'm recommending that we bring that back to the next meeting. The regular scheduled meeting, August fifteenth. So we've we talked about that couple different meetings and you'll be ready for that, Mark.
I'd like to, when we talked about that.
Yeah.
The solar panels on the ground were kind of left up in the air. And the more I thought about it, the more I kind of agree with Ted. That there's really no reason to have them on the ground. They're either on the roof or you don't have them.
Since that, since that time, I found an article about an H O A that was controlling solar panels. And I I printed it, it's laying there at work. I'll have to dig it up. But it was something about the H O A and the location of the panels and it was whether it would be a city thing or just an H O A thing, I don't know, but it was, there was a battle ensuing over it.
So if you want to share that with us, we can get it in the next packet and take a look. Mark, do you do you recall what it's what it says now? We don't it's, is it, is it still up in the air in our paperwork now in our legislation?
The chapter was in draft form.
Okay.
Thought was circulated, but I know we weren't much sure about what was going on.
Yeah.
The chapter that I provided for up in the air and on the ground, so we're gonna take that out. Yeah. I can do that, that's my problem. I'll need to go back and look at my notes and see what, you know, what some of the other questions were.
I think you, because we did, you did circulate another version of it after that. I think you covered most of the questions. Yeah. Was really.
Well, I think I can pretty much guarantee it still has.
It did, I remember that, yeah.
Because we really have, you know, I wasn't sure what we were gonna do with that, so I left it in. But that could be taken out. You're right, they did circulate another draft.
Okay. So we'll bring that back to you in August. The tonight, we did reach an agreement with the sergeants for the negotiations, so that that is on tonight's agenda. Tim from Tim Rees has been working with the park board file, finalizing the credit card policies that we started oh, probably back in January, so we put some legislation to move forward on that. And we also have some recertification courses for lifeguards. And we need to change that language and that both of those are on for first reading tonight. Since last meeting, Congressman Johnson had a communities meeting for the area mayors and managers, which was held in Salem. It was very, very well attended. We had just a few that I can think of. Minerva was there, Alliance was there, Sebring, Columbia, Leetonia, Poland, Austintown Township, I think Boardman Township, Struthers, Coatesville, Lowville and Youngstown was there. So it was, it was very well attended. And we've just really talked to kind of a round table type things. Working towards solutions of of issues that are all common to to us. So we've rescheduled or scheduled another meeting in October and we're gonna, we're gonna host the next one, so. They'll all be coming here in October. Be nice, nice to have them. I think they're gonna do a quarterly. Seven fifteen, okay.
It is seven fifteen. We're gonna suspend our discussion currently going on and we're gonna move as in accordance of our rules, we're going to, I'm gonna call a public hearing into order and to discuss the twenty twenty four tax budget of give everybody an opportunity to make any comments and with like, is there any, do we want to have Mike do any review here? Is there anything you think you'd need to say?
It's basically just wish this, you know, as a starting point.
Okay.
It's not the budget.
Okay. Okay. So what you're saying is we'll return to this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll submit this to the county auditor. And then if we have to amend it, we'll have to get an amended certificate later in the year. But we try to include everything that we can think of at this point for for projects and such. But yeah, it's a pretty, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Anybody want to make a comment about the tax budget? And hearing comments. I I've got one question. Just for me. The bottom of the second page, it says twenty twenty-three estimated grand totals of all funds. Is that for twenty twenty-three or is that the estimate for twenty twenty-four? Okay. Good catch, Skip. We have a star. Skip, I mean.
You actually read it?
Well, if you're gonna approve the non-budget, you need to read.
Well, we're not even, we don't have to prove it, right?
Any other question on the budget? Anybody else want to make any statements for the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-four tax budget? Hearing none, I'll call the public hearing to a close. Thank you. Now we'll return to Lance's report.
Okay, thank you. Been out to several of the Town Center Firestone Farms concerts on the Saturday. It's been very, very successful. While I was out there, the Mikels talked about possibly creating another Dora that would encompass their area A, B, and C. So where where Homestead is now, that's that's phase A or one. And then the mirror image that it's coming would be B or two. And then behind the stage would be three or C. And for operationally, they're, they've asked if we could move forward with implementing our Dora. Since the last time that we implemented a Dora, you can have two. We weren't able to have two before, so. You know, they have different liquor licenses through there right now with the bourbon, Mexico City and Homestead and also Sun Dog. So the the Division of Liquor actually said it would make things operate smoother also. So just wanted to have that discussion with you, see what you thought. It's been very successful events. They've, it would be very similar to the process that we've already been through, which is, you know, drawing it out and creating the legislation, coming up with a sanitation plan and 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 such. And we could, you know, get that done and and, you know, bring it back to you. I would have to work closely with them to do that. But you know, it would just be, you know, some time that the put in it. Shouldn't be shouldn't be much different from the first one, so.
How big could a Dora be? How many acres?
So it's, don't, we'll hope you right now, but it's, I think it's six hundred acres.
I'm wondering why they would extend it to the other side of the street.
I have not talked to them about that, but I think the combination of the two doors can't be too too much, so we'd have to add this one to that one, but we only have ten acres here, so. But I, as I recall, I think that the number was six hundred, so they would have a lot of room to, you know, we're not in fear of, you know, broaching that number, so.
Yeah, I just would think if we're gonna do that, because I mean, they've got the board over there, they've got, they're well on that side, so.
Okay.
They would want to open it up to both sides, but that is obviously, that's up to them.
It's a very good thought. So that would be.
Road though, crosses.
Well, yeah.
So that would be.
Yeah, let's.
People carrying.
That would be a decent research, the idea.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's not even included in, you've got Sabies right there next to the town center, but that's not including that parcel from A and C. And I mean, B and C, those aren't even started construction yet, so it seems really early to.
So I mean, but we're, you know, at the concerts, you're sitting in B and C. You know, you're, or you're actually sitting in B.
Sitting in B.
You're sitting in B when you're in that.
People are parking in C.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay, so I mean.
But I haven't, you know, I haven't, you know, talked to him a lot about it, but they just mentioned it and we can, we can work on that and get you the details, sit down with them, see what they actually, exactly what they want to do and bring it to you.
Well, you said the the liquor control board says we can now have two.
No, no.
You have multiples?
Okay, so let's back up. The Division of Liquor said we could do more than one. It, a Dora would be applicable out there, would work really well out there. The higher revised code is what says we can have multiple ones. And and I, and I did a quick reference. I haven't even talked to Mark about it. And it, we can't have multiple ones now.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Could we have two or can we have multiple?
Yeah, we can have multiple. It but that it would not affect the status of our current one, so. But prior to that, when we initially adopted the the first language, we could only have one, but since then, power revise codes have been changed, so. So I can get some more information, put it in your packet next month. I mean, it's not something that's, I mean, I think I think it took us three or four months to get through it last time, so. It's, you know, probably not gonna be something that's gonna affect their season this season anyway, so.
Well, I think it's a good idea and since Liquor Control Board suggested it. I just should not go against them.
I know, but I don't think that's a good idea.
So, well, you can talk to me with any concerns and I can try to get more information before the next meeting.
I know they're talking about, just talking to Red Brick Conference to see if they want to be included.
Okay.
If we're gonna go into this process, we might as well try to figure out all the iterations of.
Okay. Mark's been working with A P O on Lakefront Golf Course, which involves a promissory note and we placed legislation on the agenda to allow me to sign that. So thanks, Mark, for all that work. It's just another step in that process. We opened bids for a truck and have placed that legislation to move forward with that on the agenda. Steve, as part of the paving, we had to raise several manholes in that machine. We rented that company came in and raised them for us, did a very nice job on the ones that I saw. We are in the process of hiring for the street department. We did have a couple of water breaks. Actually, one was a planned event, but the other one was a break that we had to do over the last couple of weekends. Our cap has continued to pothole. Looking for lead lines, doing that lead line study. The Park and Cemetery, they've been talking about creating a playground committee, so we, they, during that process and their, their plan is to begin for planning for construction of a new playground. And they realize it'll be a long process. They are gonna be using social media, committee meetings, and flyers to get input from the public. And their steps are basically to collect data information, then go into the design phase and then seek funding. And they'll be working with R and B to ensure that it complements the work that's been done out there. And they'll continue to communicate with park board and council to do that. So it's nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five is the last time that was done. That committee, the new committee, has actually reached out to the old committee that happens to be sitting right over there. They want to familiarize themselves, yeah. To, you know, so we're not not reinventing the wheel and you know, we'll, we'll learn from what they've done, so. Tim just provided a report to me to give to you of, you know, moving forward. Electric Department, they changed the transformer pad out that had failed and replaced the pole today at on Stanton. And I believe that's everything I have. Eric.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions on anything? You've talked about the sergeant. We're gonna still need to discuss.
Yeah, that's, that's on the agenda tonight.
Under executive session?
No, I don't think, no.
Is there a need for executive session?
Not for the police, no.
The item, there.
We do not need it. We do not need an exec, I mean, we
Okay.
The executive session that is on the agenda is not for that item.
But we are gonna have executive.
Yes.
We need an executive session.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks for your clarification.
That's okay.
Okay, um. I would like to indicate that you received a copy of the M S Department Report for June of twenty twenty-three. You've also received a copy of the Building Zoning Department Report of June of twenty twenty-three. You've received a copy of the Mayor's Court Report, June of twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions on any of those items? Any of those reports, the comments, questions? Okay. The next item is regarding our bid results for the one million gallon tank painting and the super duty XL for W B crew cab truck. A discussion on those items at this point. Okay. You have received a copy of the bill list of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three and July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on the bill list?
Just more of a formatting question. So I assume that the July eighteenth, what is the format out of the new software?
Yes, so the six twenty-two one, which is an odd date for one, we had the we were just discussing at the end point about the date of six twenty-two is an odd date for the bill list, but during that software turnover, we had to end everything at six twenty-two and then six twenty-three started. And it was like seven days that we couldn't spend any money, so that was fun. And so that's, that's why that there's an odd date there.
Yeah, I was actually worried the the new bill list, is that the new format we're gonna be seeing?
Yes, yes.
I do kind of miss the itemization that we had of the old one. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that or.
Okay.
Okay. Because a lot of times, just looking at the itemization would help me figure out what it was actually about.
Okay. So, yeah, I can, I can look, look at that. I, I, the software is pretty powerful, so we can.
Yeah, no, I mean, but, yeah, it just, I do, I did like the itemization, you know, before, because we, like I say, you could figure out a lot of times what that item was, you know, what that P E was based on what we're buying from them, so.
Very good. I will note that. I will note that.
New comments, thank you. Uh, we have no whole business, so at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion to approve the request from Ashley Garber, the Little Clippers to hold a tag day on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-three in the city at several business locations.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Do you have any color roll?
Listen.
Yes.
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 Seeking a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four tax budget.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Item C, motion to accept the contract agreement between the OPBA Sergeant Unit and the city.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash six-two-three, first reading. A resolution amending resolution number twenty-two dash R dash six-one-two, which ratified and approved acceptance of credit and debit cards for payment of Firestone Park Pavilion's shelters and Idabel Firestone Gathering Place rental fees, Firestone Pool rental fees and Columbiana Cemetery fees.
So moved.
Uh, I did have a question on this one, uh, I just, from the special meeting park board, special, that one, they, will we change the language on this to take square out and include?
Yes.
Okay, yep. So that's already been done.
Yes.
Good question. Any other comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash two-four, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a certain promissory note and other documents necessary with APL Properties LLC regarding financing of public improvements to be made to certain land within the city of Columbiana.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-eight-seven, first reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into contract with Sarchione for the purchase of a twenty twenty-three F-two-fifty Super Duty XL cab. Is that bad?
Crew cab, crew cab.
Sorry, crew cab, okay, I'm sorry. We have truck with a ninety-eight inch reading classic two aluminum service body for the electric department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions?
I'm just assuming we're gonna update that bad to cab.
Yeah.
I'm early off.
I, I read it at first, I was like, what, what is a bad? It's a special truck. I'm no expert, so yeah, it's.
As to keep them from getting shocked. Any other questions? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-eight-eight, first reading, an ordinance amending chapter ten sixty-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Columbiana, that section ten sixty-two point one oh, lifeguarding and lifeguard recertification classes, setting the rates for providing lifeguarding and lifeguard recertification classes provided by a certified instructor employed by the city of Columbiana at the Firestone Pool.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-eight-nine, first reading. An ordinance adopting and approving fees for commercial building and development in the city of Columbiana.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or comments?
Yes, I do.
Uh, these fees, are they pretty much mirroring the state fees?
There, yes, the state fees in the uh, city of Salem, so. We're gonna have the same fees as there, they do.
As a state or a city?
As Salem, as city of Salem, they're gonna be a little bit different than the state, just because of the percentage that the state's already gonna take. But they are standardized between the two cities. And I forgot to mention them in my management report, I'm sorry.
So I'd been under the understanding that they were gonna provide us with the list of the state fees, so we'd have it for comparison. Could we ask for it for the next?
Sure.
Next reading, it's not, it's not critical today, I was just curious. Cause if somebody says, well, the state only charges a hundred, why are you charging a hundred fifty, which I don't think is the case.
As we get it done quick.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that was, that was part of the discussion we had, was charging a little bit more, because we were gonna be local, we will work quick and we have everything available here. So there was discussion about making them higher.
Yeah, which, which is, as I said, is fine, I just wanted, someone's gonna ask, why are you, why are you guys so much higher? And I want to be able to say, well, we're only ten dollars higher and this is why, sure, so.
And we'll have back clarification.
If that's all I would ask.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-nine-zero, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with M and A Coatings LLC of eighty-four Pennsylvania for the one million gallon water tank painting for the city of Columbiana.
So move, second.
Motion second. Are any questions, comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 At this point, I would entertain a motion, well, maybe I should say this. Are we gonna take any action?
No.
After this, okay, so uh, for the huge crowd that's here tonight, being concerned about their welfare. So we are going, going to executive session, do not plan on taking the action. As we return, I'd like to ask if there are any questions, comments uh, from anybody here tonight out there. Okay. Hearing none, I'll ask the council members if you have any comments you would like to make.
Um, I'm just gonna comment on the Fourth of July celebration, I do appreciate all the hard work that the committee put into pulling that together again this year. Um, as usual, on Facebook, there were a number of people who are complaining about this or that, and it's like, to my, which my response is, um, step up and help them out, they were shorthanded and underfunded and they still managed to put together a great party out there, so I really appreciate the hard work that they did and uh, and I encourage people, if, if you think it could have been better, jump in there and help them out, because they'll take all the help they can get.
And we, and just to add to that, we appreciate the work our police did providing security and safety. And we seem to get through it, the, I talked to the chief, I know we went through that pretty unscathed with minor issues, but our police very effectively took care of that, those issues.
Rick, regarding the special meeting, if you didn't want to have it on Monday, July thirty-first, I could do it earlier in the evening on the thirty-first. I have another meeting at the, at seven o'clock that night.
Thirty-first, I, I can't figure the thirty-first.
That's cause I need to be out to, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'll be back either.
I will probably stay with the first.
And Mayor, I wanted to point out that um, the safety forces, the job they did last week during the gas leak uh, south of town there was, was very good, I mean, they did a great job, so, thank you. We were, we were texting a lot, I was out of the, the state last week, so uh, they kept me informed and, and just did a, you know, did a great job. Whether it's the press, you know, press release or the, you know, the press conference, they, they did a wonderful job and, and I know the couple of the um, Fairfield Township uh, people that live out there, you know, called in and thanked us for, for helping them, so.
Very good. I might be saying this a little bit early, but there probably will be a ribbon cutting for the uh, with the new building department. And right now, we're talking about August sixteen.
Yeah.
That's a potential date, that would be at the Sod Center. And um, so hopefully, if you're back in town, we'll probably communicate that date. When it gets tied down, that's, that's not firm yet. But it's a really great thing, I think it's a, it's a tremendous opportunity taken advantage of, and it's really nice to see that coming to fruition. Uh, any other comments?
Are we officially up and running with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely, um, we've had.
Inundated with application.
Where, where there was a, there was a buildup there, I think, and uh, but actually, you know, the, like, um, the main inspector, he actually came out, visited with a, with a industry that was thinking, just thinking about doing something and kind of set it them in the right direction, so they could do their homework ahead of time, so it's great.
Very good. We can set that special meeting, I can set that right now for August.
Sure.
So I guess if I have the power, wow. And authority, that's. I guess we'll set the special meeting for uh, August, Tuesday, August first, uh, twenty twenty-three. Consider that issue that we need to find the tank.
Yes.
On the water tank.
With seven PM.
Seven PM. Okay, well, thank you very much, that has been done, thanks for the recommend reminder. Hearing any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose, purpose of discussion of collective bargaining, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you all. I would entertain a motion to come out to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Also entertain a motion for German.
So move.
If you're.